Planning Commission meeting is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. We are live on KCLV, Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, and Tuesday at 5:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Evans.
Present.
Vice Chair Trowbridge.
Present.
Commissioner Goines.
Present.
Commissioner Truesdale.
Present.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Flengus.
Here.
Commissioner Moody.
Here.
All present.
Thank you very much. I call to your attention the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions in the appeal and review process if appropriate. Due to the closure of city offices on Fridays beginning in January of 2011, the appeal period for Planning Commission meetings that have been rescheduled to Tuesday nights will be extended to the Monday following the 10th day, which is a Friday. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate your adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Thank you very much. The minutes of our meeting, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the Planning Commission meetings of January 25th and February 8th of 2011?
So moved.
We have a motion to adopt the minutes of January 25th and February 8th, 2011. Please cast your vote. We move on to our housekeeping items. Any items from the Planning Commission staff and/or the applicant that wish to be stricken or held in abeyance at a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Can we have the housekeeping items from the staff so we can determine which items are moving forward, please?
Mr. Chairman, item number six, the applicant has requested this item be tabled. Items 14 through 17, the applicant has requested these items be withdrawn without prejudice. Item 18 and 19, the applicant has requested these items be withdrawn without prejudice. Item 22 through 24, the applicant has requested these items be obeyed to the April 12th Planning Commission meeting. Item 37, the applicant has requested this item be obeyed to the April 12th Planning Commission meeting. And item 38, the applicant has also requested this item be obeyed to the April 12th Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you very much. Does anyone wish to speak on any of these items with regard to their being held or withdrawn without prejudice? And if yes, we'd like to limit the discussion to the matters that were brought forward. Seeing none, do we have a motion, Commissioner Trowbridge?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as modified by the staff request for items to be tabled or withdrawn or abated.
Thank you very much. We have a motion. Please cast your vote. And the minutes have been approved. I don't believe we have any consent items this evening, so we'll move forward to our one motion, one vote. The following items may be considered in one motion or one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. I believe there's only one item on the one motion, one vote, and that is item number...
13.
Okay. Okay, it's items seven through 13. So I'll read them into the record. TMP 38862, the applicant is D&amp;G Hotel Group LLC. The owner is Shapiro Trust et al. for one lot commercial subdivision at 70720 North Main Street, and that's in Ward 5. Staff is recommending approval, of course. Agenda item number eight, WVR 40764, the applicant Woodside Homes of Nevada, Inc. The owner, Woodside Mansion Colony LLC. It's a request for a waiver of Title 18.12 to allow a private street to terminate in a dead-end stub where a cul-de-sac is required adjacent to the east side of Egan Crest Drive, approximately 600 feet south of Grand Teton Drive in Ward 6. Agenda item number nine, TMP 40762, for a 50-lot, single-family residential subdivision in Ward 6. Item number 10, review of condition, RQR 40594, the applicant is Lamar Outdoor Advertising, and the owner is Hurst Development LLC, which allowed a 40-foot-tall, 14-foot-by-48-foot off-premise sign at 2395 North Rancho Drive in Ward 5. Item number 11, RQR 40724, the applicant is Westland Enterprises, and the owner Fred Cavalli, which allowed a 40-foot-tall, 14-foot-by-48-foot off-premise sign at 4510 Norton Way in Ward 4. Item number 12, SDR 40765, the applicant is Savers Stores TVI, and the owner is WEC97K-36 Investment Trust for a covered service and loading area addition to an existing 29,950 square-foot retail building with no screening where an 8-foot wall or dense landscaping is required at 8530 West Lake Mead Boulevard in Ward 4. And the last item on our one motion, one vote portion of the agenda is agenda item number 13, Site Development Review 40766. The applicant is Nevada Health Centers. The owner is the City of Las Vegas, and is for a proposed two-story, 30,800-square-foot medical office at the southeast corner of Mount Mariah Drive and Stella Lake Street in Ward 5. Did anyone wish to have any of these items pulled from the one motion, one vote portion of the agenda, either commissioners, staff, or members of the public?
Mr. Chairman, for the record, I need to abstain on item 10. My law firm uses this company for some advertising.
Thank you. If the clerk can reflect that the commissioner will be abstaining on item number 10, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Let me open the public hearing. Mr. Farlow?
Yes, through you, on items number 10, 11, are they keeping these signs nice?
Don't defer to the director or the staff?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, yes. In doing a evaluation of the sites for both of those signs, they are keeping them in order.
They put neon on them?
I don't believe they are, no.
And Commissioner wants to pull item number 12 from the one motion, one vote. So we'll pull item 12 and hear it in due course. Seeing no objection, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on those items of the agenda that are identified as one motion, one vote that I read into the record.
Yes, I'm willing to make a motion on items number... 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 13 to accept the staff's reports and make a motion for approval subject to all conditions.
Thank you. We have a motion for approval of the agenda items that the vice chairman read into the record. Would everyone please vote? Okay, and those have been approved?
Mr. Chairman, items number 7, 8, 9, and 10 are final action unless appealed within 10 days. Items number 11 and 13 will go forward to the April 6 City Council meeting.
Thank you very much. Will you hear agenda item number 12 now? I already read it into the record. Staff, can you give us a brief report on that, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to add a three-bay covered loading dock at the rear of the existing store. The existing store is any fully-developed commercial shopping center, and there is not sufficient room for the required screening from a parking lot that is across the access drive that would service the loading dock. Staff is recommending approval with conditions, and if denied, the loading dock would not be permitted.
Thank you very much. Did anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll open and close the public hearing. And commissioners?
Yes, thank you. I'm asking for a little more explanation as to what's going to happen to the back of this building because of its significant impact on the offices that are right adjoining its contiguous parcel. If you look at the one parcel or the photograph that you have, that's the second or third one back, that shows the guardrail coming down, that one. This photograph is being taken, apparently, or from my recollection, from the corner of where this Class A office building is. And I just think that a loading dock with a covered screen, with no wall or any landscaping, is going to have a significant negative impact on that office building. And I just would like to hear something more as to why this is a good deal for the whole neighborhood.
Do we have the applicant here? If you could identify your name and address for the record and perhaps respond to...
Do you have any renderings that show what the back of the building is going to look like?
Yes, Barney Michaelchuck, Greenberg Pharaoh Architecture. I represent the applicant, Savers. We provided renderings for the submittal. There is an existing loading dock at the rear of the building presently, which was built at a time when there was no requirement for screening. This loading dock will be used for smaller local delivery trucks, and it's a pretty basic rear elevation, but the color scheme, et cetera, et cetera, is meant to integrate it into the building as best as we can. And as for providing the necessary landscape or screen wall, the site just does not allow for that while maintaining clearance for a fire lane, a 24-foot-wide fire lane that is required around the perimeter of the shopping center.
And how many deliveries are going to be there per day, do you estimate?
Delivery hours, we propose to restrict them to the applicant does, to 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. The exact number of trucks is contingent upon the activity. We're not talking hundreds of trucks a day. We are talking perhaps a dozen trucks a day.
Or maybe two dozen.
Or a two dozen.
Yes, and they're like, the smallest ones I think I've seen are 28-footers.
I believe they're proposing to use a 24-foot truck, and it's been designed for the 24-foot truck with a little allowance for maintaining the fire lane clearance.
And what does the rendering look like? Is it on the... That's the front.
Oh, is it on your screen? It's on. If we look at the center elevation, which has been rendered, it's a pretty minor improvement to the overall facade.
That's my point, minor improvement. And it disappeared again. Where's the... The rendering of the back of the building is my concern. There, that doesn't help me a whole hell of a lot. Okay, all right, I think my position is known.
Anyone else care to comment?
I had a quick question. Can customers drop off too, or is this only for prescribed vehicles?
No, customer drop off is restricted to bringing the goods into the interior of the building using the front of the facility. This is purely an internal Savers loading dock area. Customers would not be permitted to use it.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to add that right now, that other office building that's behind you is already looking at the rear of this building, if I'm not mistaken, and you've already got the junction boxes and everything else associated with the rear of the building, visible to that building as it stands.
Absolutely correct, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain on this item inasmuch as I sit on the board of a private school that falls within the notice area.
Thank you. Question, is there anything that can be done to mitigate some of these issues that have been raised?
Potted plants on the loading dock. No, I don't mean to be facetious, but no, given the required clearance for the fire lane and maneuvering the trucks into the area, it would just be impossible to construct the loading dock with any sort of screening, landscape, or screen wall or otherwise.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Flengus, you were going to say something?
I already said something. If there's no further discussion, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Ready for a motion, then?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pertaining to item number 12, SDR 40765, I would go ahead and move to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you very much. We move on, I believe, to agenda item number 20. Is that correct? SUP, Special Use Permit 39821, the applicant Money Tree, Inc., and the owner, Katzem LLC. And it's a request for a special use permit for an auto title loan used within an existing 3,093 square-foot, non-conforming financial institution specified with waivers to allow a 90-foot distance separation from a residential use where 200 feet is required, a 990-foot distance separation from a financial institution specified where 1,000 feet is required, and hours of operation from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. where 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. is allowed at 2950 West Sahara Avenue in Ward 1. The staff has recommended denial. Can we get a report from the staff, please?
Mr. Chairman, staff is recommending denial of this application as the proposed use cannot be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with the existing surrounding land uses, as evidenced by the required waivers of the distance separation and the hours of operation. If this request is denied, the auto title loan cannot be permitted on this site. Please note, we have received an additional protest since publication.
Thank you very much. Can we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Jennifer Roberts, Lionel Sawyer &amp; Collins, 300 South Fourth Street, appearing on behalf of Money Tree. This is an application to add auto title loan use to an existing Money Tree. It's been in business since 2002. The nearest residential is across from Sahara, so it is buffered by the Six Lane Road of Sahara. The nearest financial institution specified is 990 feet away, also across from Sahara, and actually further away because it's part of a large commercial center. And the company understands there's no vehicles to be stored on the property. We have plenty of parking, and they're in process of restriping and painting the parking, and we'd be happy to have your approval.
Thank you very much. This was advertised as a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on this item, please come forward.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. In the current issue of Mother Jones Magazine, in the article 1040 Slies, it tells about what they call poverty barons. And it tells about how these companies are extracting the money out of the neighborhoods with ungodly fees. And this is not just this application, but I think that the entire commission should read this article to see where we go on this, because these people are locating in the areas that can least afford it. And I mean, when you read this, you will be amazed. They just vacuum the money out of these neighborhoods. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Seeing no one else, I'll close the public hearing. Quick question. This is an existing financial institution specified. They're proposing to add an auto title loan. Regardless of what the action is on this, the existing business remains. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners?
Yes. Ms. Robertson, is that your name?
Roberts.
Roberts. I visited your applicant's property, and I kind of stood in the back and watched it for a while, and the things that I found were this, that the window is existing already in place for the title loan to start up as soon as you're approved. Am I correct in saying that? It was the window off to the left after you come in the door, because you guys were so busy, I didn't get to talk to somebody. So it's already there. You're not adding anything on, am I correct?
Correct.
Correct. The second thing I noticed was the place was immaculate. The third thing I noticed were three or four people were in each line, and your courtesy attendants were calling banks. They were checking on the individual's action to make sure that it was, in fact, a good deed to cash the checks. My only finding was that although handicap accessible and perfect and everything, is that I do want the parking striped, and I do want the handicap signs in place, but I got to tell you, we're in a time when people are going to be using your service, and this place was beautiful. It was like walking into a bank. And with that, you're going to see my approval, and the only thing I say is not one car is stored on that property, and I know you can assure me of that.
Yes.
So, you know, I never thought I'd see the day that I'd want to see these places, but it just looked like a bank, and you will see my approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any else, anyone else have a comment?
Yes, just one comment. I would like to invite Mr. Farlow to get a copy of the article. He references to the city clerk so they could become part of the record and we could get a... I can try to read it.
Thank you very much. Are you ready for a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for approval of abeyance, SUP 39821, following all staff's recommendations and the fact that you're going to restripe the parking lot and add the handicap spots for me, please. Thank you.
We have a motion for approval with all conditions as listed in the staff report. Would you please cast your vote? A yes vote is for approval.
Thank you.
And that has been approved.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, that item will go forward to the April 6 City Council meeting.
Thank you very much. We move forward now to agenda item number 21, Special Use Permit, SUP 40564. The applicant is Sequoia Electric, and the owner Sage Bruch Property Ventures. And it is for a rental store with outside storage at 4485 North Rainbow Boulevard in Ward 4. The staff is recommending denial. Can we have a report from the staff, please?
Mr. Chairman, before we go, I'm going to abstain on this item as I have in the past. I have a partner who owns property right adjacent to the site.
Thank you very much. Would the clerk reflect the commissioner's abstention? Staff?
Mr. Chairman, this request is related to an amended request for a general plan amendment, rezoning variance, and a site plan review. These related requests were considered by the Planning Commission on October 10, 2010, at which time the commission recommended denial. They are scheduled to be considered by the City Council at the March 16, 2011, meeting along with the current request for this special use permit for the rental store with outside storage. The applicant has indicated that the previous requested entitlements will be amended at that time to reflect the following. The general plan amendment will be amended to general commercial from LIR, Light Industrial Research. The rezoning will be amended to C2 zoning instead of CM, Commercial/Industrial, and the variance in the SDR will remain unchanged. But the use will be amended from a heavy machinery and equipment rental, sales, and service facility to a rental store with outside storage. Staff recommended denial of the previous request for the general plan amendment, rezoning, variance, and site plan review, as it was determined that the requested land use designation and zoning districts were too intense for the surrounding area, and their proposed use would not be compatible with the existing surrounding uses. Staff also recommends denial of the current amended request, as it is, staff finds it is not compatible or harmonious with the surrounding land uses. And then... I've lost my train of...
Is that a... The denial is for the special use permit?
Right, the denial is for the special use permit. We're just noting that we're also recommending denial of the amended request to C2 zoning and GC, General Commercial, as these do not provide adequate buffers and furthers erodes the C1 commercial zoning in the area.
But regardless of the disposition of this item, it will move forward with the others that are before the City Council on the 16th?
That is correct.
Thank you.
It is scheduled to meet up with those applications.
Mr. Chairman, if I might just interject, the special use permit that we are hearing this evening will not be able to go forward to the March 16 City Council meeting, but will have to wait until the April 6 City Council meeting for consideration.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Sir? Mr. Chairman, commissioners, good evening. Richard Gallegos, 3005 West Horizon Ridge Parkway here on behalf of the applicant. I want to thank the commission for allowing us to hold this item to reevaluate the need for our special use permit. After careful consideration, we do feel the need to seek your approval for the use permit, although it is a very small area. It's a key component to the success of this project. With that, as staff has stated, we've got four related items. Tomorrow, I will be submitting a letter to request those items be held until the April 6 City Council meeting, at which time this item again will be forwarded. So all items will be heard at the April 6 meeting. With respect to the use permit, we did have a neighborhood meeting February 1. 280 notices were sent out. We had three of our neighbors show up. I talked to two of them last night. Unfortunately, the two that are most impacted live directly across the street. One has family in town, the other one had to work, so they can't be here tonight. However, I believe it is fair to state that they are certainly not opposed to our request. Again, the two individuals are directly across the street. And with that, we'll move right into the use permit. I do have a conditions of approval I'd like to submit to the clerk and to hand out to the commissioners. These are conditions that we did agree with the neighbors at the neighborhood meeting and further conversations with the neighbors. There's eight conditions. Certainly, we can read those into the record, but would like to enter that into the record at the very least. They consider items such as hours of operation, days a week, just general business activities to ensure that the neighbors, that the use permit and this business are properly conducted and harmonious with the neighbors. We do understand and accept staff's, if approved, conditions. And with that, I'd like to just quickly go over to the overhead. We get the engineer. And I'd just like to point out where we intend to propose. This is the area designated for the outside storage. It's approximately 2,000 square feet, 50 by 40. As you can see, it's buffered with an 8-foot wall to the south. As you can see, it's buffered with an eight-foot wall to the south, an eight-foot wall to the east, and of course, the building to the north. So it's certainly well protected, not only from public view, but also from the surrounding properties. So we feel, again, due to the nature of the request and the small size, that this certainly is appropriate. And at this point, I'd like to conclude and certainly entertain any questions the board may have.
Before we discuss it, what is it exactly that you're seeking to do? Is it storage of equipment, heavy equipment, crane equipment, small equipment?
No. We're restricted to rental facilities, what we're proposing with outside storage. We understand that even if we did receive approval tonight, everything is contingent upon receiving the appropriate zoning at city council. But to answer your question, Mr. Chairman, the intent of this project was for a rental facility of small equipment, not defined as heavy machinery. So there would be things such as a ditch witch, small garden type of tools, if you will, smaller pieces of equipment.
Is it visible from the street, or is it screened?
No, it's, again, screened from the south by an eight-foot high wall, to the east, which faces Rainbow and our neighbors, by an eight-foot tall wall. And again, to the north by an existing building, which is approximately 22 feet.
Thank you.
So it's well protected.
Thank you very much. This has been advertised as a public hearing. Did anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I have no problem really with the project that you're trying to do. What I do have a problem with is the type of zoning that's required for you to do this type of project. Right now, you're zoned C1, and the type of project you're trying to do is not a permitted use under C1. So you're seeking a C2 zoning designation, which would allow you to do the type of project that you're referring, that you're trying to get on. The problem I have is a C2 designation in that area is far too intense for the location. You're basically surrounded by C1 to all sides of you except to the north, and then across the street, it's all residential. And so because you're seeking a C2, you know, all intentions start off, or all ventures start off with good intentions. And your client or plans probably to be there for a long, long time. But the problem is, two or three years from now, he pulls up. Now we've got a C2 in an area that's really not conducive to a C2. And you and I, for purposes of disclosure, I've had a conversation with Mr. Gallegos on this. If you got rid of your outdoor storage, as we discussed, you don't even need to come in front of us, because it is a permitted use under C1 as a matter of right. And so if you want to consider getting rid of your outdoor storage, you can say goodbye to us and you don't have to worry about it anymore. But unfortunately, because of the C2 designation being far too intense for that location, I'm not going to be able to support this tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one other question.
Yes, sir.
If I could ask the city attorney, the fact that this is not even a permitted use under C1, can we even hear this tonight? Or is the applicant correct? It would just be contingent on what happens at the city council?
What applications go before the city council?
The applications are a general plan amendment and a rezoning to general commercial and C2. Originally, the applicant had requested a general plan amendment and rezoning to an industrial use.
So you can't hear it tonight, and it will be dependent upon what the city council does with the GPA in order to get the use on that he wants?
Any other comments from any other commissioners on this item?
Any appetite to do away with the outside storage?
At this time, Commissioner, with all due respect, no. It's a small component, and we've evaluated that, so we'd like to move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeking a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In regards to item number 21, abeyance SUP 40564, I move to follow the recommendation of staff and for the reasons I stated earlier, to deny this item.
There's a motion on the floor for denial of agenda item number 21. A yes vote is for the denial. Please cast your vote. And that has been denied. The motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, this item will go forward to the April 6 city council meeting.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you very much. We now move forward to agenda item number 25 and related items 26, 27, 28, and 29. I'll begin with agenda item 25 is the zoning, 40756. The applicant and the owner, Pacific Woods Rentals LLC. And the request is to change the zoning from R1, Single Family Residential, to PR, Professional Office and Parking, at 717 South 8th Street in Ward 3. The staff is recommending approval of the zoning. Agenda item number 26, related, is the variance, VAR 40757. And that's to allow four parking spaces where five spaces are required. The staff is recommending approval. Agenda item number 27 is a variance, 40758, to allow no perimeter screen wall where a minimum six-foot screen wall is required adjacent to a residential zoning district. And on that item, the staff is recommending denial. 28 is a variance, 40876. And that's to allow a lot width of 49 feet where 60 feet is the minimum required, and the staff is recommending approval. And lastly, the site development plan review, SDR 40759, is for the conversion of a 2,482 square foot, single-family residence to an office, other than listed with a waiver to allow no perimeter landscape buffers, where eight-foot wide buffers are required along the north, south, and east perimeters. And on that item, the staff is recommending approval. So we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 items, four of which they've recommended approval. And agenda item number 27, the screen wall, they've recommended denial. So the staff, can we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the area around the site has been transitioning from residential neighborhood to professional offices that support the downtown core. This request to convert the subject site to an office use is appropriate, and the proposed rezoning will conform to the existing mixed-use general plan designation. The subject site was created by combining two 25-foot parcels, which was common practice at the time of development, but does not meet the current minimum width requirements under Title 1908, and provides justification for the variance request for both lot width and parking. Staff is recommending approval of the rezoning and variances for lot width and parking. Approval of the site development plan review is also recommended, however, staff does not support the requested exception to allow eight perimeter trees where 16 are required, as there is ample room on the site to provide the required landscape materials. Staff is recommending denial of item 27, which is the requested variance regarding the perimeter wall, as it is necessary to provide screening for the residential property of the south, and for which the applicant has provided no evidence of unique or extraordinary circumstances pursuant to Title 1918070 that would substantiate the request. If all requests are denied, the site will remain as a single-family residence. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support for these items since publication.
Thank you very much. The applicant, can we hear from you? State your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. Justin Bruny, 832 Trotter Circle. Thanks, Matt.
Jeff Gultra, 5416 Vat Masters and Circle.
Would you like to explain the project? And specifically, could you, as the staff indicated, they're recommending approval on all the items except for the wall. Can you address that, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you for having us here, Commission. The wall that was explained to me is, would be out of the scope of the neighborhood as I see it. A six-foot wall going from the very beginning of the street to the, all the way to the back of the street. You can see on the pod right there. My understanding is it's supposed to go all the way to the front of the street? Is that right? No, you guys?
That is, Mr. Chairman, that is, that is correct.
Okay. And driving around this neighborhood, I don't see one six-foot wall that is around there. I know that a lot of the parcels are already commercialized. Our business is basically real estate. We're a nine-to-five type of business, low impact. We've got about five employees. Most of us are out in the field throughout the day. And this is just a, an office space for us to do business, mostly clerical, and, you know, call a place our home. Right now, we're currently in an executive suite, so we're just trying to expand a little bit. So in regards to the six-foot wall, you know, we can build it back off of the street, but I just think it'll take away from the neighborhood as a whole. If there's one six-foot wall going all the way to the street, I think it'll take away from the historic nature of that neighborhood.
Okay. I, there was information that there's a residential property next door, and I believe they want the wall. And I'm told that your willingness to construct the wall would go a long way toward finding the staff's support for this. But we'll...
Yeah, I mean, we, you guys say we need to build the wall, we'll build the wall. I don't have a problem with that at all. I haven't spoken with the neighbors about the wall. Have we?
No. If they want the wall, we'll build the wall. It's just cosmetic.
Yeah. Just for cosmetic purposes.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is advertised as a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak?
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I'm curious, would the neighbors be... Would they approve, instead of a block wall, would they be happy with a, with a live hedge there, like a, I mean, like sand cherries or something like that, bushes that go up? That pod thing's got to go, that's for sure. But I, in this, I agree with the applicants. I think that a six-foot high screen wall will take away from that, from that, that old neighborhood look. And I can, I'm guessing that the neighbors just want some sort of a privacy thing there. And a privacy hedge would be much better, I think, than a wall. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I agree with the applicant in a way. A six-foot block wall isn't going to serve the world a great bit down there. I mean, a lot of the old residences down to that corridor have an old, I'm not the biggest fan of some of these block walls, but there's three-foot walls and they step up. If the applicant's willing to build something or do something like that, I think that's, that would be more in keeping with the neighborhood than a six-foot high wall. I think it's a visual impediment to the whole streetscape. And quite honestly, I know if we have to do something with the neighbor, we can. But a lot of these houses look pretty nice down here with no fencing out in their front yards. And it kind of opens the street up, so.
Sure.
Anyone else care to speak?
Yes. I tend to agree. I find that, you know, to put more block walls would be detrimental. I think if the neighbor wants privacy, I would certainly hope that we could present to them the concept that a landscape buffer would be preferable. And along those same lines, while I know we're kidding about the steel building, but I would like to see that certainly go as soon as possible. And the existing wrought iron front, is that absolutely mandatory that that remains? It just is...
It's a rough neighborhood, sir. I, I'm just kidding. No, it's, we have a design that we'd like to bring into the feel of the neighborhood. The wrought iron is way outdated, to say the least.
Am I hearing you're willing to take it down?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Good deal.
Oh, sorry. Yes.
If we could go with that, I would, to get rid of the wrought iron in the steel storage container, and simply a commitment to work with the neighbor to perhaps try to get them to accept a landscape buffer, a hedge or something, I would, I would support the item.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me. Are you going to have clients come to your office here, or is this just a clerical place?
It's a clerical office. Clients could come. We do own various rental properties throughout the Las Vegas Valley.
I mean, there'll be an office and clients will come in there?
It will be an office. We're not selling anything, per se.
No.
Aside from real estate. But it's not like a regular real estate office.
I just got to toot the horn about my one handicap parking space. Because if clients are coming in there, I want to make sure that it's equal access for all people.
Yes, ma'am.
And I would also like the front door ramped so that that person can get inside your office and complement your business and be a part of it.
Absolutely. I believe that's part of the...
That's part of it.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Then you'll see my support.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any one further? Let me, if I may, I'm inclined to agree with you and some of my fellow commissioners here with regard to the wall extending all the way out to the front, because that would look kind of peculiar. My concern is, if I'm not mistaken, there is a woman who continues to live in the property next door. It's still zoned residential. It's her home. And from what I'm hearing, she wishes to be protected by the backyard. I don't think there is as much concern about the front. But if you don't put up a wall, basically, your backyard in a business will be part of her backyard. There'll be no way to distinguish. And I don't know what you intend to do back there. But my thought is, perhaps there's a compromise here, where you could provide the wall from the portion which would go from the, maybe the beginning of the house or the structure toward the back. That way, you're not bringing it all the way up to the front. But you are providing a visual and a security barrier for your neighbor. And since you're seeking a zone change, and she still lives there, I certainly would give a great deal of deference to, you know, her wishes. And I don't think that's unreasonable, but I would defer to my fellow commissioners as to how we might... And I'm not opposed to the hedge idea, it's just that my experience is that there's no way we can assure compliance with maintenance, and they take a while to grow. And, you know, in a perfect world, that would be spectacular, but it's not perfect. Commissioners, any ideas on this?
Mr. Chairman, I'll take a stab at a motion for this item.
Okay.
With regards to item 25, the rezoning from R1 to PR, I would make a recommendation we follow staff's recommendation for approval, subject to all staff's conditions.
We have a motion for approval on agenda item number 25. Please cast your vote. A yes vote is for approval. And that has been approved. Agenda item number 26?
With regard to item 26, VAR 40757, move for approval subject to all staff's conditions and including verification of a handicap space.
Thank you. We have a motion for approval. Please cast your vote. A yes vote is for the approval. And that, too, has passed. Agenda item number 27?
I'd like to come back to them. Let's go to 28.
Agenda item number 28, the variance?
Move for approval subject to all staff's conditions.
Agenda item number 28, motion for approval. And that has been approved.
With item 27, the wall issue, I would make a motion that the wall be compatible design with the residential property adjacent to you, starting from five feet back from the corner of the structure, all the way back to the alleyway. back from the corner of the structure, all the way back to the alleyway, providing visual break between the rear area property and the residential property, and that you would install a landscape hedge feature or planting from the front of that wall to the, to the curb.
Mr. Director.
Mature, mature plant, hedge structure.
Mr. Chairman, if I might just clarify, what we would be doing then, based on Commissioner Truesville's recommendation on item number 27, is that the commission would be recommending approval of the variance, which would not require the applicant to construct the wall at the front property line, but rather would require the applicant to construct a six-foot-high wall, starting five feet back from the front portion of the structure along the southern property line, continuing all the way along the southern property line to the alley. And then within the front yard setback area, the applicant would be required to plant a hedge on the property line.
Could I recommend 15-gallon trubs?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, Public Works.
Yes.
Could we also recommend that adequate site visibility be provided, so it doesn't go quite all the way to the alley and, and block someone parking, not being able to see cars coming down the alley?
Okay. With regard to where it stops in the rear portion, I think that's something that has to work out with, with Public Works' visual sightlines.
Just provide adequate visibility at the, in the rear alley.
Mr. Director.
What I might add is that we add a condition to that variance indicating that the final location of the wall at the alley shall be reviewed and approved by the Public Works' Department.
Thank you. Is it something that you can live with and that you would agree to?
Absolutely, sir. However, I would ask, and I've never done this before, but what if the neighbor doesn't want a block wall? Is that, if we go over there and say, hey, we're, this is what they told us to do?
Well, it's, your zoning application, and I'm told that, Mr. Director, you had a conversation today, or someone did?
We did have a conversation with the adjacent property owner.
Okay.
We might just note for the record that this item will go forward to the April 6 City Council meeting. That gives you adequate time to meet with the adjacent property owner, to review the condition that may be placed upon this project by the planning commission this evening. If there's any need for alteration to that condition, that can be done at the City Council meeting on April the 6th.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
But in principle, you agree with the condition?
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So I believe we have a motion, and we've clarified the, the conditions of approval. And if everyone understands the motion, let's cast our vote. A yes vote would be for approval with various circumstances read into the, conditions read into the record. And that has been approved. And then we do the site development review.
With regards to 29 SDR 40759, move for approval subject to the minor changes that are of the particular variances.
And might I suggest, I believe there was a request to have the wrought iron removed from the western elevation?
Yes.
Yes, include that as well.
Yes. There we go. We have a motion for approval, and you're in agreement with that? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Motion for approval. Cast your vote. A yes vote is for the site development review, and cast your vote. And that too has been approved. Good luck to each other.
Thank you very much for your time.
And, Mr. Chairman, these items go forward to City Council, to the April 6 City Council meeting.
Thank you very much. And you may want to speak with the neighbors, so. We move forward to agenda item number 30, and that's a variance 40768. The applicant and the owner is Nevada Hand Inc. And the application is to allow a zero-foot side yard setback for an accessory structure. It's covered parking, where five feet is required along the north property line at 6731 North Decatur Boulevard in Ward 6. And we have a related item, agenda item number 31, which is the site development review, 40767. And it's for building modifications and the addition of covered parking with waivers to allow no landscape perimeter buffer, where an eight-foot-wide buffer is required along the north property line, and to allow residential adjacency setbacks of 66 feet along the south property line and 49 feet along the west property line, where 70 feet was previously approved for a building, and 35 feet along the south property line, where 50 feet is required for a trash enclosure at an approved 75-unit senior apartment building. The staff is recommending approval. Can we have a report from the staff, please?
Mr. Chairman, the subject site was previously approved as part of a larger apartment development with waivers of the residential adjacency standards. These requests would further reduce the residential adjacency setbacks due to an increase in the overall size of the building, but the building would still meet the required building setbacks. The number of units within the building will not change. The reduced residential adjacency setbacks will not negatively affect the adjacent parcels as they are owned by government agencies. And although no current development plans exist for the sites, they are intended for future civic uses and not single-family residences. A covered parking is proposed along the north perimeter that does not meet the required setback for an accessory structure. However, the applicant has provided evidence of unique or extraordinary circumstances as a multifamily apartment complex consists of multiple parcels that function as a single development. And the covered parking is proposed along the north interior property line located along a drive aisle. A requested waiver of landscaping along the north perimeter is also supported for this reason. Staff is recommending approval with conditions of both requests, as the changes to the site will have little impact on the surrounding properties. If denied, development of the site shall comply with all previously, previous approvals. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support for these items since publication.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Can we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening. Jackie Haas and Rich Turner, 295 East Forum Springs, Las Vegas, Nevada. We agree with staff's recommendation of approval, and we're happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This was advertised as a public hearing. Did anyone wish to speak on these items? Seeing none, I will open and close the public hearing. Commissioners? Commissioner Moody?
If there are no questions, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Looking for a motion.
With regard to item 30, VAR 40768, move for approval subject to staff's conditions.
Thank you. We have a motion for approval. A yes vote is for approval. Please cast your vote. And that has been approved. And the companion item, the site development review on 31, Commissioner Moody, you prepared to make a motion on that?
I am, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Item 31, SDR 40767, move for approval subject to staff's conditions.
Thank you very much. We also have a motion for approval on agenda item number 31. Yes vote is for the approval. Please cast your vote. And that too is approved.
Mr. Chairman, these items are final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you very much. Good luck to you. We move forward to agenda item number 32. That's a variance 40773. The applicant and owner are Party Homes of Nevada. It's to allow an eight-foot or less garage setback, where six feet or less was previously approved on lots, I believe, 1 through 15, 30 through 48, 67, 81, 83, 93 through 106, 111 through 122, 133 to 142, and 149 to 156, at the southwest corner of Shumber Road and Darrell Lane. And that's in Ward 6. And the staff is recommending denial on that. Can we hear the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting an increase in the minimum allowable driveway length in a residential subdivision. Driveways are limited to less than five feet to prevent a vehicle from parking in the driveway and blocking the sidewalk and/or a portion of the street, or greater than 18 feet to allow a vehicle to park completely on the driveway. The subject subdivision was previously approved for driveways of six feet or less in length. Increasing this dimension further to eight feet will only encourage the parking of vehicles in these driveways, resulting in the blockage of sidewalks and streets. The staff is recommending denial to the request due to safety concerns, and the applicant has presented no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance to substantiate the requested variance. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support for this item since publication.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Can we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Todd Stadham, 5740 South Arville, representing the applicant. My co-op, my co-partner here to present is Mr. Gronauer, and he hasn't made it yet, so I'm, I'm going solo. So just to let you know what we're doing on this, this is a finished product. All the offsites are completed. Party Homes has purchased the project and wanting to come in and, and finish it with housing. As, if those of you that are familiar with the site, it's very steep, running from west to east, creating street slopes greater than 5%, which creates a hardship to put a short driveway product on it. So we want the product as far forward as possible. We have to push it back just enough to get the driveway slope to meet the minimum required or the maximum required of 14%. The previous applicant was Astoria Homes, and their product had different things that aren't utilized too much today, such as single-car driveways, which we don't want to do. We're going to do two-car drives and two bays and things of that sort. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you guys may have.
Thank you. This was advertised as a public hearing. Does anyone want to speak? Please come forward.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I was driving around the south part of the valley in a neighborhood, I mean, almost like this, with the steep hills and the short driveways and that. And it was a mess, an absolute mess. I don't know how it happened, or whatever, nobody's paying attention to that. But, and that's county, I know that's county, but I, I know what these things can look like. Now, I, I don't know if this was the applicant or not, but at one time, they were going to put a sign in the garage itself saying you can't park in, in that, in that space. And, and like I say, I don't know if this product that, that was built in the south part of the valley had a, a sign like that in the garage or not, but that place was a, was a disaster.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak on this matter? Did you want to respond at all, sir?
I don't, no.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm, I'm willing to support the application. I, I think these, I understand the slope of these drives and these changing product types are going to create some problems down the road, but it is, it is the product that, that works on the property. And with that, I would support the application, providing there is deed restrictions about parking enforcement, regulations within the CCNRs, and signs posted within the garage, and an additional disclaimer that the homeowner signs at closing, which I think is what we put on, on these items, to address the fact that the, those are not two additional parking spaces out front. With the, and I think Parties agreed to that in the past. You're in agreement with that?
We're in agreement with all of that. Yep, absolutely.
With that agreement, I'll make a motion for approval, subject to all of staff's as of approved conditions, including the, the added conditions of the, that the tenant has agreed, or the property owner has agreed to.
Before you make the motion, Commissioner Moody, did you want to say anything?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I have spoken to Mr. Gronemeyer about this and received assurances that staff's condition number six about the disclosure to potential buyers, both in CCNRs and within the garage, some type of placard, you're happy to comply with that. I'm also inclined to support this. I understand that the street slope is not conducive to a short driveway, and you're trying to put a new product, a, a smaller product than I think Party is, is used to placing on, on this development. I do have a question, however, and I, I would appreciate some explanation about how you're going to deal with the sidewalks that are inside the development.
In terms of, I mean, there is, there is sidewalk on one side of the street.
And can you explain, maybe you can show on the diagram which side of the street that's on?
It's pretty difficult to tell on this diagram, but...
That's exactly why I'm asking for an explanation.
Yeah. I can point and show you where they're at, because I can see them barely.
Okay.
But you'll, you'll see that they're, no, no, they're right here, slightly wider. So that's sidewalk. Sidewalk. Sidewalk, sidewalk. So it's, you know, it's, it's, varies on either side of the street throughout the project. So there is, there is some sidewalk on the side where we have the, the slightly longer driveways.
Okay.
In a few instances.
Mr. Chair, if I can continue?
Yes, thank you.
So just to clarify, these affected lots, some of them will have a sidewalk, some of them will not.
Right. Less than half of the 82 lots that we're asking for this on will have a driveway in front of it.
Okay.
A sidewalk.
So the questions.
A sidewalk.
Okay. We, we have a question.
Before we go, we have a couple of questions, I guess, for Public Works. What is the width of the streets in this development?
Mr. Chairman, through, I believe they're 39 feet if they're rolled curb and 37 if it's L.
They are 39, and they are roll.
And do we have any kind of calculations as to the number of off-street parking spaces there are?
Off-street parking, I don't, I'm not too familiar with that as far as the requirement per house. I, I'm not sure what it would be.
No, I, I doubt if there's a requirement per house, but I'm just wondering if there's any kind of calculations to how many...
Yeah, we do with the, with a lot that is 40 feet or wider, we consider has one available parking spot adjacent to the home. I'm not sure how wide these lots are.
They are all greater than 40, so they do accommodate at least one per residence.
One street parking.
On, on street parking. And of course, there's two bays, so there's at least three spots for every home, which is more than code.
And you, you mentioned that the slope of the driveway was an issue with federal financing or something? Was that common?
Yeah, I believe FHA. I don't know exactly what the slope is. I actually think it's a little bit flatter than the cliff's edge design...
And because, I understand, these are to be priced so that they're empty-level homes?
I believe so. I'm not, I don't know the exact numbers, but I believe so.
All right, I'm, I'm okay.
Thank you very much. I think we have a motion on the floor. If there's no further discussion, maybe you can clarify the motion again. Commissioner? It was a motion for...
Motion was for approval, subject to all staff's conditions. And I think my concerns were addressed in condition number six.
Very good. Thank you very much. We have a motion for approval on agenda item number 32. If everyone understands the motion, please cast your vote. A yes vote is for the approval. And that has passed.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, this item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Very good. Thank you very much. We move forward now to agenda item number 33, and that's a variance VAR 40799. The applicant is the Neon Museum, and the owner is the city of Las Vegas. The application is to allow an eight-foot-high solid wall with a 25-inch wrought iron top, where eight feet is the maximum height allowed at 770 North Las Vegas Boulevard in Ward 5. The staff is recommending approval. Can we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the subject site is currently surrounded by an eight-foot-high temporary construction fence that the applicant has indicated is ineffective against problems with site trespassing and vandalism. The applicant proposes increasing the eight-foot-high wall with a 25-inch iron fence addition in order to prevent unauthorized site access. Staff finds that the combination of environmental conditions, such as the changing grade in the neighboring structures, has created a hardship for facilitating unauthorized site access that is unique to the site. It has concluded that the applicant's hardship is not preferential in nature, and it's within the realms of NRS Chapter 278 for granting a variance. Staff is recommending approval.
Thank you very much. Can we hear from the applicant, please? Can we hear from the applicant, please? Gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, Sam Tolman with Public Works, representing the city. We agree with all staff recommendations.
Pat Klink with Westar Architects, 701 Bridger, Suite 400, 89101.
So, you agree with the recommendation for approval?
Yeah, I think it's a good solution to the problem. We've been having a lot of vandalism and people jumping the walls for various reasons.
Okay. Thank you very much. This was advertised as a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I need to make disclosure. I have supported items on the Neon Museum in the past, and Mr. Klink's firm has done some architectural work for me recently, so if there's a concern, I will abstain on this item.
Perhaps out of the abundance of caution, you're certainly welcome to abstain. Commissioner?
I have a, just a couple of questions. If, I understand that this is just for the frontage there on Las Vegas Boulevard. What happens for the balance of the perimeter of the, of the site? It seems like the security issues aren't just along Las Vegas Boulevard. They should certainly go along McWilliams and, and Cannon Drive.
Might I clarify that?
Yeah, what's going on there?
This, this extension of the fence is just around the Neon Boneyard sign area, which is on McWilliams and the back lot. It's not out on Las Vegas Boulevard. It covers the, the area of which the signs are presently going to be, are being stored and will be stored. So, the rest of the site is not fenced.
Then how do the vandals, if it's not fenced, how do the vandals not have access to the, to the delicate neon exhibits?
The, the problem is, is that the, the neon signs are in the, the boneyard area, and that's where they're jumping in. Out in front of the building, the building is, blocks any access, and there is a fence around the back of the LaConcia shelf, separating the front yard from the boneyard area.
Basically, there's a fence all the way around the boneyard, and it's enclosed.
And the eight-foot fence is adequate. See, that's where I'm going. The eight-foot fence is, is adequate in one section, but in the other section, you need the eight-foot solid plus another 25. I'm, I'm trying to give you all you need. I'm not opposing you. I'm saying you're not asking for enough.
Basically, the, the fencing that's visible from Las Vegas Boulevard, the eight-foot, seems to be adequate. The fencing on the rest of the, the boneyard perimeter is where we're looking to increase the height.
Okay. If you're happy, I'm happy.
And, and just for my own clarification, as I understand it, on top of the fencing will be the curved wrought iron, much like, for lack of a better understanding, when you're going down Joe Brown by the Hilton, the, the Las Vegas Country Club has that, and it somewhat deters vandals or Manera de Wells from getting in. Is that the purpose of this?
Yeah, it, it makes it difficult to climb, and that's where our problem is.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other discussion on this? If not, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, item 33, VAR 40799, move for approval, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Thank you. We have a motion for approval on agenda item number 33. Please cast your vote. A yes vote is for approval. And that has been approved with Commissioner Truesdale's abstention, if we'll please note that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you. We move forward now to agenda item number 34, special use permit 40738. The applicant and the owner, iRent B&amp;E LLC, for a 5,520 square foot expansion of an existing pawn shop with a waiver to allow a zero-foot distance separation for residential use where 200 feet is required, and 175-foot distance separation from an existing title loan where 1,000 feet is required at 520 Northeastern Avenue. The staff is recommending approval. Can we get a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the subject site contains an existing 9,110 square foot multi-tenant building. An, an existing 3,590 square foot pawn shop is located within Suite 150. The request is to expand the existing pawn shop to include the remaining part of the building, which is a 5,520 square foot expansion. Proposed expansion requires the special use permit, as it will be greater than 50% of the floor area of the original approval. Staff recommends approval as the request is consistent with Title 19, and the expansion of the use will not have a negative impact to the surrounding area, and is found to be compatible with the surrounding land uses. If denied, the pawn shop use will remain as originally approved.
Thank you very much. Hear from the applicant, please.
I'm Winston Henderson, architect. On behalf of the applicant, 1555 East Flamingo Road, we have reviewed staff conditions and concur with all except condition number three, in which the applicant wants to note, he does not object to the removal of the existing wire, but wants to note that that was placed by the adjacent property owner, and he does not have control, but does not object to its removal, but not, would not want that to be a condition for him, since he can't remove the neighbor's property. With all other conditions, we approve of.
Thank you very much. This was advertised as a public hearing. Anyone want to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Steph, can we clarify the condition number three and our position in that matter?
It appears that the Constantina wire is on the other side of the wall. The support structure is on top of the walls. What we can do is delete this condition, and we'll make a request to code enforcement to contact the appropriate property owners for the removal of that wire.
Thank you very much. Looking for discussion or a motion? Motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
The motion is for approval on SUP 40738, eliminating condition number three, following all staff's recommendations, and thanks for pointing that out.
Thank you. We have a motion for approval. A yes vote is for approval. Please cast your vote. And that has been approved.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We move forward to agenda item number 35, special use permit 40739. The applicant is Ace Loan Company. The owner, BF Trust, for a pawn shop within an existing 1,606 square foot commercial building with waivers to allow 50-foot distance separation from a residential use where 200 feet is required, and 20-foot distance separation from an existing financial institution where 1,000 feet is required at 519 East St. Louis Avenue in Ward 3. The staff recommends denial. Can we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, before we start, this is my lucky night. I'm going to abstain on this item, as much as one of the beneficiaries of the BF Family Trust, or the Bach Family Trust, is a tenant of mine in a, in a shopping center, so...
Thank you very much. The clerk can note Commissioner's abstention. Steph?
Mr. Chairman, distance separation requirements are in place to provide a buffer between certain uses and to protect residential uses from the impacts associated with those uses. As the proposed standalone pawn shop location does not comply with the minimum Title 1904 separation requirements from residential use and from a financial institution specified, and cannot be conducted in a manner that will be compatible with the surrounding uses, staff is recommending denial of the request. Please note that there are additional letters of protest for this item since publication.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kessler?
Good evening, Chairman. Commissioner members, Todd Kessler, 206 North 3rd Street, Las Vegas, 89101. Try to be brief. Let me first start to say that in staff's report, you saw some comments as it relates to graffiti, trash, and billboards. I brought some photos with me today to show you that the property owner has take, has resolved those since we saw the staff report. We've removed the graffiti, we've removed the billboards. I have additional photos to show as well, if you care to see them. But I can, I can put on the record that all of the trash, the graffiti, and the billboards have been removed. I think it's important to talk to you about this business a little bit. It's a, it's a unique business in Las Vegas in the sense that it's been here for 60 years, which is, it's quite a bit to say for it. Current operators have owned it, or operated it for 36 years, and prior to that, the father-in-law of the current operator owned, operated it. They are a family deeply rooted in Las Vegas. They are very deeply rooted in this ward. One of their sons runs a temple on Maryland and Oakley. Daughter-in-law is a pharmacist at the, near the Hunt Ridge property. They've renovated many houses in this ward from a dilapidated state and brought in some of their constituents. Again, the operator actually taught at Valley High, and maybe taught some of our esteemed scholars here tonight and others. As it relates to the waivers, I can, you know, this is a pawn business. This is, again, the 1,000 distance, distance requirement between financial institutions. This applicant has operated its business in the past, directly adjacent to pawn shops, specifically on First Street when it operated there, right next to SuperPawn. That is, again, who they're operating, who, if they got this approved, would be operating against, next to. They are a very different product than that product. They're more of a mom-and-pop, old-school-style business. In their history, they've never had any complaints against them. The residential component, as it relates to the distance requirement there, again, I would cite simply that SuperPawn is already there, adjacent to them, and with that being said, they've been a good neighbor to the adjacent landowner as it relates to providing parking and request, approving certain requests that they've made for variances. Their departure on 3rd Street will help redevelopment, redevelop that portion of 3rd Street, and with that being said, we would ask that you approve, subject to the conditions of staff. I'm here to answer any questions if you have anything further.
Thank you very much. This was advertised as a public hearing. Anyone want to speak? Please come forward.
Well, I heard great accolades on the owner, and then I, I hear that they cleaned the thing up two minutes before the meeting, and this landscaping, I mean, there is no landscaping. It looks atrocious out there. I can see why the neighbors had protests. I mean, this is crap. I mean, if this is, the, if, if they're asking for a, a special favor from, from the city, then by golly, they ought to be out there not two minutes before the meeting, but they ought to be out there years before the meeting and clean it up and planting some trees, getting the landscaping in, and getting this thing nice. Look at that. It's crap.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak? Mr. Gronauer?
Good evening, Commissioners. Bob Gronauer, 8345 West Sunset Road. I'm here tonight representing SuperPawn. A couple of comments here. Number one, obviously, this new location is being proposed here, is going to be right next door to an existing pawn location. Obviously, we do not believe that that would be compatible in the area to have two pawn, two pawn shops located essentially right adjacent to each other. The other point that I do want to make is that we do empathize with respect to the applicant here, where they're looking to remove or to relocate to a new area. Not too long ago, several years ago, just to refresh your memory, SuperPawn was in a similar position with respect to redevelopment down by the Golden Nugget. They had their lease bought out. One of the things that SuperPawn had to do then is look for a new location. Unfortunately, it took about five or six years to get to find that new location, because they, in the same position as the applicant tonight, had to go around and look at several different areas before they finally found a suitable location. So, although we're here tonight in opposition, we do empathize with, with respect to the situation that, that's actually presented itself here tonight, but again, we do not believe that having two pawn locations, pawn shops at this particular location is actually compatible and harmonious to the area. So, with that being said, we do object to the proposed special use permit.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kessler, did you want to respond?
Sure. I'll respond first to Todd's comments. Again, I wouldn't say two minutes. Once it was brought to our attention, we immediately took care of it. The, the amount of trash that's built up there is directly in regards to the adjacent landowner, which is, one of the culinary unions have a shop there, and there's a lot of overflow traffic that occurs there. Again, this, this building's been vacant for a while. These prop, the same operators and applicants have owned this property since 2002, I believe, if not earlier. As it relates to the SuperPawn comments, you know, again, I, I indicated to you that this applicant has operated adjacent to SuperPawn in the past, and for a long, for quite a bit of time, and succeeded. And as it relates to the 1,000-feet distance requirement, I can cite numerous examples where those distances are not met and continue to be waived. So, I'd rather than continue with that, I'll just stop.
Thank you very much. Anyone from the Commission wish to speak? Commissioner Trubridge?
I do remember the, the incidents of the two pawn shops being downtown and being bought out. I remember SuperPawn coming forward, asking for permission to locate in different, different locations, and it took them multiple times to find an appropriate site. Where I'm heading is fair is fair. You know, they had to look around and find a spot where there wasn't going to be another financial institution exactly like it in the area. You know, the waivers that you're, you're speaking of are, are the broad classification of financial institutions, which go all the way from a place that just cashes checks to a bank, to a credit union, to a...
Correct.
You know, and so, it, but these are identical businesses, you know?
To some degree, yes.
To some, to some degree. And, you know, I generally don't believe in the planning function being responsible for controlling competition. You know, there, there is something to be said for concentration, and I just had to clarify that.
Let me just say this. When SuperPawn moved into that location, it required a waiver as it relates to an institution as well, but it was not a pawn shop. It was a payday loan, I believe, at that time, in that same center.
Further discussion? Commissioner Moody?
Thank you. Just a comment. I, I don't believe I can support this. I also have concerns about the, the location with regard to the other financial institution, but you're also asking for a zero-foot distance separation from a residential use where a 200-foot separation is, is required, isn't that correct?
Did you say zero?
Yes. Waiver to allow a zero-foot distance separation. Is that incorrect?
Mr. Chairman, through you, from residential, that is a 50-foot separation distance.
So, it...
The previous application had a zero. We have a 50-foot distance.
Okay.
And I don't know if that's the reason, but again, SuperPawn operates within that same 200-foot range.
Mr. Kessler, you said that SuperPawn and you were, when we compared you as the exact same operating business, you said sort of. What did you mean by that?
Well, again, SuperPawn, I would call more of a corporate-style pawn shop, when I, and again, I indicated this is more of a mom-and-pop, and by that meaning, there's a lot more product lines that you'd find in a SuperPawn, and they do a lot of other types of products. And I don't know about this location, but they offer car loans and, and various other types of institutional products that is different from what my client would be, what I would call a traditional pawn, which is jewelry and some loans on that jewelry.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry to, to go back to this, but I, I want to make sure, just by way of clarification, what I have in front of me is a request for a zero-foot distance separation from a residential use where 200 feet is required, and...
Can the staff clarify that, please?
Certainly. Mr. Chairman, in the advertised header, it does indicate that there is a 50-foot distance separation from residential use. We're talking about the multifamily residential use, which is directly across the street to the east. Earlier materials may have indicated a zero-foot distance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are we ready for a motion? I, just for the record, I met with Mr. Bach, and I find him to be very honorable. They have deep... They have deep roots in the community, as was represented by you. They've purchased businesses in the areas that I hope will be redeveloped. And I find him to be a very honorable fellow. That having been said, I also received a number of emails and comments today from various people from that adjacent neighborhood who, although they don't know Mr. Bach, they object to the use and the proliferation of pawn shops within that area, so...
Okay. And I, since that, I did reach out to the Beverly Green Association, Mr. Monahan, and spoke with him. He didn't say where he was going, but he appreciated me reaching out to him.
Right. Well, thank you very much. Looking for a motion?
Looking for a motion. I would look forward to a future application from this operator at another site. And would be very sympathetic to trying to help them every way reasonably possible. But based on what we've heard tonight, I would make a motion in regards to item number 35, special use permit 40739, to support the staff recommendation of denial.
We have a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. And the motion for denial passes.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you very much. We move forward now to agenda item number 36, which is Graceful Facials and Bodywork, Inc. It's SUP 40747. The owner, 6600 West Charleston LLC, for a 1,730-square-foot massage establishment with waivers to allow distance separation of 100 feet from a religious facility where 400 feet is required, 0 feet from a residential use where 400 feet is required, and 730 feet from another massage establishment where 1,000 feet is required at 6600 West Charleston Boulevard, Suite Number 126, in Ward 1. The staff is recommending approval. Can we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed massage establishment will be operated in conjunction with a cosmetology establishment within an existing shopping center and can be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with surrounding uses. Staff is recommending approval with conditions. Please note that there is additional letter of protest for this item since publication.
Thank you very much. Ma'am, do you want to state your case and tell us a little bit about your business?
I'm Ruth Whitten, 8036 Lake Falls. And pretty much Graceful Facials and Bodywork is something I've worked towards for quite some time. I've been operating as a sole proprietor for over 15 years, and now I'm reaching out to expand myself. And professional licensed esthetician, as well as a massage therapist, and this location would be perfect.
Okay. And are there conditions that you agree with? Are there any conditions on here from the staff?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, there are conditions on this.
You've read all the conditions and you agree to them?
Okay. Actually...
I think they're fairly standard, but you...
Yes. And actually, the religious facility, there is no religious facility in that location, period. I believe over a year ago, someone was renting, maybe, but they're not there anymore.
Staff, can you just briefly indicate what those conditions are so we can make certain the applicant is in agreement with them? Either Mr. Rankin or...
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Condition number one just requires conformance to the minimum requirements for a massage establishment per Title 1904.010. Number two is conformance to the approved conditions for rezoning Z 014489. Number three, the approval shall be void two years from the date of final approval unless a business license has been issued to conduct the activity. An extension of time may be filed for consideration by the City of Las Vegas. And number four, prior to occupancy, all necessary building permits shall be obtained and final inspection shall be completed in compliance with Title 19 and all codes as required by the Building and Safety Department. And number five, these conditions of approval shall be fixed to the cover sheet of any plans set submitted for building permit. And number six, all city code requirements and design standards of all city departments must be satisfied except as modified herein.
They're real standard. I just wanted to make sure that you knew what they were.
I agree.
You agree. Okay, thank you very much. This was advertised as a public hearing. Did anyone want to speak on this matter? I don't see anyone, so I'm going to close the public hearing and offer the Commissioners, Commissioner Quinn?
Yeah, I had a lovely meeting with Ms. Ruth. And I explained to her that a special use permit means that it is special. And I think what's special about your project is that you're taking a gamble on our city and you are going to open up your very own business for the very first time. And I want my planning commissioners to know that that church is gone. I want them also to know that onsite already, you have two esthetician sites, which I'm anxious to get into one of the chairs for a nice facial. I'm excited for you, and I'm very happy to make the motion for approval. If my other commissioners don't have anything else to say, it's a legitimate business and it's a big move for you, and I hope it works out.
Thank you.
I think I'm going to add one condition, just in case, if you don't mind, an administrative...
Review?
Review, in one year, just so that we can come back in a year and make sure that everything's running as you said it was going to. And in your hours of operation, we spoke about, which were Monday through Thursday, I believe, 10 to 8, and Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, 10 to 6. And if you don't have business on Sunday, you would just close and come in only if someone called you for a massage or something like that.
Yes.
So it all works for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Did anyone else want to say anything on this item? If not, I'm...
Are you going to take that second seat, the same big Commissioner Quinn goes?
No.
Mr. Chairman?
He's going with me.
I may need two seats.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Pardon, yes ma'am?
So I understand correctly, am I being asked to close on Sundays?
No.
Okay, okay.
No.
And Mr. Chairman, if we could amend the condition to read, a one-year administrative required review, one year from the issuance of business license.
Okay. Amended?
As amended. So with that, I make the motion for approval of SUP 40747, following all staff's recommendations with the added condition for the review.
Thank you very much. We have a motion for approval with minor modification, and a yes vote would be for approval. Please cast your vote. And that has passed.
Mr. Chairman, that item will go forward to City Council on April the 6th.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we move forward to agenda item number 39, which is a special use permit 40771. The application, Rodo LLC, the owner, J&amp;L Property Leasing LLC, for an 11,361-square-foot motor vehicle sales used at 5,600 West Sahara Avenue in Ward 1. And the staff is recommending approval. Can we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing a used motor vehicle sales lot, including service bays on property that was formerly licensed for the same activity from 1997 until 2009, but the use expired on October 22 of 2010 after being discontinued for one year. The site can be accessed by Sahara Avenue or Westwind Road with ample space onsite for vehicle deliveries and turnout for trucks. The proposed use complies with Title 1904 minimum special use permit requirements and can be conducted in a manner that is compatible with surrounding land uses. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions. Please know that there are additional letters of protest for this item since publication.
Thank you very much. The applicant?
Good evening. Jeff Donato and Don Martin here with Fenimore Craig, 300 South Forest Street, here on behalf of the applicant, who is here with us as well. We have read the conditions as proposed by staff, and just a couple of things we want to clarify and/or address for you. Condition number one is conformance with the minimum requirements of Title 19.4.10 for a motor vehicle sales used use. And one condition that states in there is that the service bays will not face the right-of-way. And just for full disclosure, and which we have disclosed in our justification letter, that there are three service bays that do face the right-of-way. Are you able to see on the overhead? This is the subject location, and these are the service garages back here. Three are located in this facility, and there's six in this facility, three facing the rear and three facing the front of the property. And it was determined, when we spoke with the planner, that in a planning meeting, it was determined a waiver was not to be required. We did not see that in the staff report, so we just want to make the record clear that we were not asked to apply for a waiver for those service bays facing the right-of-way. And this is also another picture. This is an older picture taken, but you'll see this is facing the front of the property, and you cannot see the service bays facing the front of the property.
Okay. Let me ask for clarification from the Director, if I could?
Certainly. The information that you were given in the pre-application conference is correct. Because there is an intervening building between your actual service bays and the street, that it's completely obscured from view from the street, consequently, you do not need a waiver, and we do find you to be in compliance with the minimum standards.
Thank you. We just want to make sure that was on the record.
Are you, the other conditions are standard? Do you agree with all of them?
There are two other conditions that Mr. Martin will address.
Yeah, we also wanted clarification. On the prior condition that was in rezoning Z 5195, condition seven was that the repair facility shall be limited to five service bays. And again, can I put the picture back up, Jeff? The property did actually have, I think it has nine service bays on there right now. So we just want to clarify that as well. That was discussed with the staff as well.
Did someone want to address that? One of our staff, perhaps?
Which zoning case?
Z 5195, which was amended by Z 197. So there's been two zoning cases that were site plan reviews, one in 1995 and one in 97. 97 amended the application to add additional service bays, so it's been amended by that action. This action doesn't amend the previous actions. We have action on top of action here.
Okay. Anything else?
Condition number four, we're not necessarily objecting to this. We wanted to discuss whether or not it would be possible to not have the two properties joined together. Jeff, do we have the map of that as well? The two parcels in question are divided right here. One is the back storage lot, and the only reason we would like to keep them separate is in the event the property is ever sold in the future, that that back storage lot could be rented to other auto dealers along the way for storage. Many of the auto dealerships along that corridor will often rent and lease other parking lots from other dealerships. So it's beneficial to keep these two separate, just in the event of a future use, rather than aggregating the parcels into one lot.
Well, I think this is complicating matters. Can, Mr. Director, can you provide some elimination?
Certainly. There is a concern on the part of staff in not having those parcels joined together. If the parcels are under one ownership, then obviously there is control over the conditions of approval and the use of the property. Because there are residential properties immediately behind that second parcel that you have, there are concerns in terms of the operation of used car sales, auto storage, et cetera. By joining them together, we eliminate that extra layer, if you will, of ownership that has to be dealt with in resolving issues that impact the neighborhood.
Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Okay. Anything further?
And we also had a conversation with Commissioner Quinn, and we agreed to, the business will be closed on Sundays.
Okay. Very good. So essentially, the staff report is recommending approval, and with the clarifications, you agree with the conditions?
That's correct.
Very good. Thank you very much. This was advertised as a public hearing.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street, and I agree with staff that this ought to be kept as one lot.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak on this matter? We have some additional folks. If maybe you could step back, and is it just the two here?
Sure.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Yes, it's the two of us. My name is Gary Swansker, 2270 Westwind Road. My property is very close, very close to the property in question. Concerning the prior discussion about separating the lots, I think it's important that you maintain that as one unit, because there's really not any access to that lot. There is a permanent gate closure on Westwind off of Sahara, and there's really not any employee that anyone could access that back lot without going through the dealership itself. So that would create a problem in the future. My other issues, and the gentleman owns the LLC spoke to me just as you were discussing the hours of operation, is my understanding that they'll be closed on Sunday. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Because my three issues, I read all the conditions in the, with all the supplemental material. One of the concerns I had was whether or not the dealership would be closed on Sunday. I think because of the location, this is between the Hummer dealership, excuse me, the Tobin dealership, which is now going to be Rolls Royce Bentley dealership, I understand, and the new Desert Mini Cooper dealership. This property is located right between those, and those are closed. And I believe that all the dealerships between Decatur and Jones on Sahara are closed on Sunday, so I hope, I wanted to support that issue being closed on Sunday. The other, the other issue of, that I have, two other issues, is quality of life issues for our neighborhood. One's the loudspeakers. According to the analysis, it says that the applicants indicated no loudspeakers will be used. And then in fact, the prior operator did not use loudspeakers to convey information to sales or to service people, but they did use outside speakers for music. And they left that music on day and night, including the weekend, including Sunday, after hours, which I think was, and I talked to the sales manager many times about that, and was never able to resolve that. So I request that if they do use the loudspeakers, which are present on the property for music, that they shut that music off at the close of business and leave it closed on Sunday, off on Sundays. The other issue is the test driving route plan. I was somewhat instrumental in having that on its place on the books, along with my associate, Kanita Jones here. And basically, what that does is requires a written test driving route plan by all car dealerships so that we know they're not coming into our neighborhoods. Now, this has been enforced, and I had substantial problems with the budget dealership not honoring that agreement. And currently, the Mini Cooper, evidently, they didn't have to apply for a special use permit because somehow the information didn't get relayed to them, so they're using our neighborhoods for transport and using it for showing cars through our neighborhood. That was a complaint I had from many of the neighbors that received notifications. So my question to you is, how do we enforce the test drive route plan? Do we do that through code enforcement, or do we call the metro? How would that be enforced?
We'll have them address that in a few minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this matter?
Kanita Jones, 5645 O'Bannon Drive. Oh, and we're back to the test driving and the trucks. Transport trucks continuously go across O'Bannon. They don't take the major streets. Nissan, I know, unloads right on Redwood, Red Rock comes around, but one day, there was three trucks right in a row. I know they weren't all at Nissan. Mini Coopers flying up and down. We don't need another one doing it again. And when they're going to tear up Sahara to make it a great bus route, where are these people going to unload? I have yet to see a transport truck unload on their property. And I've been there 17, 18 years, not once. They all unload on Sahara or on the side streets, and the closed side streets is fine, but when they come back around and come off Red Rock... but when they come back around and come off Red Rock onto O'Bannon, through our neighborhood, again and again and again. Nothing's ever been solved. You know, we're expected to run out and get pictures of people, get their names, bring them down here so they can be fined. It's impossible. You know, I don't sit out there. I've got other things to do. So I want something done. We've been going around and around for years now, and no one's taken care of our neighborhood yet.
Thank you very much.
Yet.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing no one else, I will close the public hearing. And gentlemen, did you want to respond to some of those issues? And perhaps we can have the staff look into the question that was asked of the gentleman from the public.
Sure, sure. And again, the applicant agrees that there will be no openings on Sundays. And after-hours, the music, if any, I'm not even sure if they're planning on having music, but certainly they'll require that the music and the loudspeakers are shut off after-hours, and so it doesn't run, as the public is concerned about. The route plan, they'll comply with the requirements for the route plan and require their employees to make sure it's followed. As to the unloading issues, again, the applicant will be in compliance with the code requirements, and it's the intention of the applicant to make sure that they are partners with the neighborhood and not to cause any consternation to the neighbors and any problems, so they'll work with them on that.
Anything further? Will? Commissioner?
If the public hearing is closed, is it?
Yes, the public hearing is closed, and...
I think we've addressed most of the issues that I'm concerned with, and the no application of music and the compliance with the test-drive route plan is certainly understandable. The only issue that we haven't spoken about is onsite employee parking. Sometimes these businesses have a significant number of employees that drive the vehicles to work, and they wind up parking in the neighborhood, and that becomes quite an issue with the neighbors. And so my question is, what kind of onsite parking provisions have you made for employees?
The number of employees is going to be probably around 25 to start, so there's more than sufficient parking, the applicant feels, onsite. The number of vehicles that are going to be onsite for sale are not as large as the other dealerships. They're thinking 50 cars onsite as a maximum. So when you combine 50 and 75, we have significant parking onsite for both staff, employees, and customers and guests, as well as the number of vehicles that'll be sold.
Do we have a one-year review on this? Okay. All right. That would be one of the things I'd want to look at. Thank you.
Can we have Mr. Rankin, can you address the question that was asked of the gentleman?
Yeah, let me address a few items. First of all, conditions of approval for a special use permit, one of the minimum requirements for a used car dealership, is no loudspeakers are permitted onsite. If they wish to have them, they'll need to request a waiver of that requirement, which would require this item to be re-noticed. In regards to the test-drive route plan, that is enforced by code enforcement, and violations of that should be turned over to code enforcement for their action. And then one additional item here is, I, staff would recommend an additional condition that all deliveries must occur onsite.
Thank you very much. I have one quick question before we conclude this. If one of the neighbors were concerned about the test-driving, and that in fact did occur, and they make a complaint to code enforcement, how is that responded to? Because clearly, the test-drive is 10 or 15 minutes, and I'm assuming the response to the complaint would take a matter of weeks or days. Would it be something that our code enforcement people would then have a discussion with the dealership? And is that how that works? Do you know?
In the past, what has occurred is if the complaint is filed, code enforcement will contact the owner of the business, inform them that they received the complaint, and then they will conduct a series of, as best they can, check the item to make sure there's no test-driving occurring into the neighborhood. If there is, at that point, they can cite.
Okay. Thank you very much. Commissioner Quinn?
Does anybody else want to talk about this before I make the motion?
Just quickly, I know, over the years, this area's, we've heard the same thing from neighbors. I've been on here 17 years. I've probably heard it 17 of those years. So I don't know, I know we say code enforcement will come out and cite, but I think until that amount of that citation gets their attention, I think it's still going to happen, because what happens, you guys are representing the applicant, correct?
Correct.
And so you're going to go back and convey that to the management of the dealership, and somewhere between there, there's going to be some wiggle room, and they're still going to be driving up and down O'Bannon. That's just the reality of it. So until we put a fine that's stiff enough on these dealerships, it's still going to happen. But I think the neighbor, I think anytime you see it, document it, take the picture, although it may seem cumbersome, it helps state the case, because we've been talking a long time about this. So, and I think some of these things should be put into conditions, and not just a gentleman's agreement on it.
I agree.
Thank you. Commissioner Quinn?
Yeah. I wanted to talk just a couple seconds about the landscape facing the south. There are not to be any cars on it, because we've gone around with one of your neighbors, and it took us about six meetings, and I drove through your lot today and in front of his, and I was so happy to see that they finally listed, and there were no cars in the landscaping. So that was my other thing. And of course, the lights won't shine into these nice neighbors' yards. So I'm going to make the motion for approval, and I'm going to repeat the things that I think are very important. Number one, thank you for agreeing not to be opened on Sundays. That was very important to the neighbors, very important to my councilwoman. Your hours of operation will be as follows, like everybody else, Monday through Saturday, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Is that correct, sir? Yes. No cars at any time will be parked on the south-side landscaping or the west-side landscaping, ever, 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 ever. That landscaping, I want you to be in compliance with the whole street, so it all blends and looks, I mean, we've worked so hard to clean that up. We want you to be a good neighbor, and we want you to follow suit, if not, look better than everybody else. My other one was that these people are right, you know, they don't want to see these cars offloaded in the middle of the streets, so all of your cars will be offloaded on your property. And that is a condition. That is not just a me and you to have a nice little chat. My other thing that was bothering me today, because I was in your lot for about 25 minutes, and the street that is blocked, I believe that's called, what's the name? I'm sorry, Westwind?
Yes.
There was not a parking space to be found, so you have to designate parking for your employees, because I don't know where they're going to go. There, I mean, I was there at 2:20, and there was not one parking space on that street on either side. I was lucky to get out of there. And then I'm going to put a one-year administration review on this, so that we can come back, look at your beautiful landscaping, and make sure that your neighbors are happy. These people have lived there a long time, and if you follow suit, like everybody else, like Mr. Tobin's son, and, you know, we've worked hard, and we want you to be a great neighbor, and we want to welcome you. So with that, I'm going to, with all these recommendations, did I miss any?
We've agreed with those.
Are you in agreement with those?
Yes, we are.
Okay, great. Okay, so following all those great recommendations and stuff, we're going to go with approval on, what number are we on? SUP 40771, following staff's recommendations, as well as the ones that I've added, most importantly, that you will not be opened on Sundays. Respect for the neighbors.
Commissioner Quinn, why don't I allow the director to read those into the record just for clarity once again?
Thank you.
Commissioner Quinn, I will need your assistance. The added conditions are as follows. Number one is that the business will be closed on Sunday. Condition number two is relative to the hours of operation, and this is where I need your assistance. Commissioner?
They agreed from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., six days per week.
Seven a.m. to 9:00 p.m., six days per week, shall be the hours of operation of the business. Added condition number three is that there shall be no cars displayed in either the south or the west landscape areas on the site. Condition number four is that the loading and unloading of vehicles for delivery to and from the subject site shall be accommodated onsite. No such activity shall be allowed in the public right-of-way. Condition number five is that there shall be designated onsite parking spaces for employees of the business. And condition number six is there shall be a one-year required review before the planning commission to review the conditions of approval.
Can I add, after the issuance of a business license?
After the issuance of a business license for the required review.
Okay. So we have a motion, and everyone understands the motion.
Mr. Chairman, was there any mention about where they could and cannot test-drive?
I think that's a standard condition.
That is a standard condition of Title 1910. They must submit a test-drive plan to the Department of Planning for Approval, and it becomes part of the record.
Is that part of their opening for business?
They cannot get a business license without it.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Everyone understands the motion. A yes vote is for approval of the SUP. Please cast your vote. And that is approved. And, you know, I just want to say that, as car dealerships go, it was always sad, and over the last couple of years, going up and down Sahara and seeing these empty lots and these empty buildings, and I'm glad that you're opening a business there. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, this item will go before the City Council at the April 6 City Council meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. We move on to agenda item number 40, which is a special use permit, 40777. The applicant is Second Act Las Vegas LLC. The owner, Sunshine Holding Company LLC, and it's for a 945-square-foot thrift store consignment at 9484 West Lake Mead Boulevard, suite number six, and that's in Ward Four. The staff is recommending approval. Can I get a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, staff finds the proposed use to be compatible and harmonious with the surrounding land uses, and recommends approval. Please note, we have received additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you. And ma'am, you're the applicant, can you, or the representative, can you state your name and address for the record and indicate whether or not you agree with the staff recommendation?
Good evening. Pamela Oxney, 7729 Kiwell Point Street, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89131. And I haven't heard all the conditions.
Okay. They're listed in the report, and I think they're fairly standard. Do we want to read them out or call them out?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Conformance to all minimum requirements under Title 19.04 for a thrift shop. Conformist to the approved conditions of Site Development Plan Review SC00199. The approval should be void two years from the date of final approval unless a business license has been issued to conduct the activity. An extension of time may be filed for consideration by the City of Las Vegas. Condition number four, prior to occupancy, all necessary building permits shall be obtained, and final inspections shall be completed in compliance with Title 19 and all codes as required by the Building and Safety Department. And condition number five, all city code requirements and design standards of all city departments must be satisfied, except as modified herein.
You understand that?
Yes.
Okay. You agree with their, they're recommending approval of this? You agree with that, I'm assuming?
Yes, sir.
And just for clarification, you're a consignment store, and you're seeking to sell purses and shoes and things of that nature?
Men, women, and children clothing. My mother-in-law has a similar store in La Jolla, California, and she's my mentor. I've not been in retail before. I've been in the medical field for over 35 years. I run medical facilities with five satellite offices, and they've been successful.
Okay. And you agree with their approval?
Yes, I do, and I'm very excited.
Okay. Thank you very much. This was advertised as a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Mr. Farlow?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. This is such a small space. I wonder if the applicant is planning on displaying anything outside of the store? If that would, I would object to that.
I definitely will not be, I definitely will not be doing that, and it's 1,280 square feet.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. The public hearing is closed. Anyone have any comments or a motion on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further comments by the commission, I would go ahead and, on item 40, SUP 40777, move to follow staff's recommendation and approve the matter.
Thank you very much. We have a motion for approval. A yes vote is for approval. Please cast your vote. And that has been approved.
Mr. Chairman, this item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you very much. We move forward to agenda item number 41, which is a Site Development Review, SDR 40772. The applicant and the owner is the City of Las Vegas. It's for a five-story, 730-space parking garage and 4,096 square feet of general retail use, with a waiver of the Downtown Centennial Plan Development Standards that require 70% of the first-story facade to align along the front property line at 500 South Main Street in Ward Three. The staff is recommending approval. And who is giving the report on this?
Mr. Chairman, this request will modify a previously approved design for a parking garage that will service the new City Hall and venues within the Symphony Park site. The proposal contains more parking spaces and is taller than the originally approved structure, and contains less floor area for general retail uses. The elevations have been substantially altered to provide decorative screening on the parking levels and space for large-scale signage. With the exception of the retail area on the ground floor, the structure is proposed to be set back from Main Street to avoid conflicts with overhead power distribution lines resulting in a requested waiver. The site meets the intent of the Office Core District Standards of the Downtown Centennial Plan, is compatible with surrounding development, and provides a redevelopment opportunity for the downtown area. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions. If denied, said development shall comply with all previous approvals. Please note, there is a letter of concern regarding this item since publication.
Thank you very much. Can we hear from you gentlemen, if you'd identify yourselves for the record?
Certainly. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner's Michael Vleavich, City of Las Vegas Public Works Department, 333 North Rancho.
And I'm Rob Girdison, representing the applicant, and I'm 1919 South Jones Boulevard.
Thank you very much. And I'm assuming you agree with the conditions of approval?
Yes, sir, we do. There is one item I would like to clarify, if I might. It may be meaningful when we do the connection across the railroad tracks to Symphony Park, and it occurs in the issues portion of the staff report, where it references a 15-foot-wide pedestrian walkway on the third level.
Where are you reading from?
This is on the staff report. It's on, it's on page one of the staff report. It's under the issues section.
Okay.
It's the first paragraph under issues. It indicates a 15-foot-wide pedestrian walkway, where 12 feet is what will be provided. And again, that's really not part of this project. It's part of the separate bridge project that will span the train tracks and connect to Symphony Park. The second item is the particular refined design that you have before you this evening. Because of the height of the stories, this will end up being, the pedestrian bridge will connect from the third level rather than the fourth level, as indicated on the staff report.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if I might just clarify with Mr. Vleavich. In terms of the drawings that were submitted and are included in the packet, that does indicate correctly the location of the pedestrian bridge?
That is correct.
Okay. Because that information is contained within the drawings that were submitted, then there is no real issue. The conditions of approval that staff has included stand as is, and then the drawings are the attachment to that, and we understand the location of pedestrian bridge based on those drawings.
Thank you very much. This was advertised as a public hearing. Did anyone wish to speak?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I want plenty of bicycle park.
I want plenty of bicycle parking. I want segway parking on the ground floor, because the guy that founded the company drove off a cliff to his death or something. Missed the curb. And the last thing is, I want free parking on council meetings and planning commissions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Looking for a motion or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I can't deal with the free parking. That's not a part of our jurisdiction, but I know that the city is working hard to make accessible parking to all modes of transportation. But I'll move for approval substitute to staff's conditions as submitted.
Thank you. We have a motion for approval. A yes vote is for approval. Please cast your vote. And that has been approved.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Thank you very much. Good luck, gentlemen. We now come to the portion of the agenda for citizens' participation. Citizens' participation, the public comment during this portion of the agenda, must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record, and the amount of, any discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time of any single speaker, may be limited. Mr. Farlow?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I'm just throwing this out there for reference and on what the Planning Commission is going with this. During the Ford administration, I mean, almost forty years ago, this nation set out on a policy of homeownership. Because with homeownership, you had a decrease in crime, you had, you had an investment in the community and the neighborhood, on and on and on. Since the great bankers have decided to crisis the economy, what we have now in my neighborhood is going to be all rental housing again. So we are right back to where we started from almost forty years ago. I just, I'm just throwing this out. I just think that it's going to be a disaster if something isn't done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Farlow. Did anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, comment, or portion of the meeting, and this meeting is adjourned.